Let's get started. Welcome, everyone, to the Joint Meeting for Rules and Open Government Committee and Committee for the Whole. We have a quorum today. Vice Mayor Jones, myself, Councilmember Davis, Councilmember Camus are all present. I'd just like to take a moment of silence here on September 11th to remember all those who lost their lives and first responders in particular who continue to endure the fallout from their sacrifice. And we pray for them and their families. Thank you for taking a moment. All right. Well, we'll begin with a review of the final agenda for September 17th. And we'll ask for any changes to the printed agenda beginning on pages three and four. I'll note that there's a beginning, a starting time of closed session at 9:00 a.m. I think we've got a long meeting ahead. Is that right? And closed session in particular. Pages five and six. Pages seven and eight, any changes?
Mayor, I just want to make a request on item 3.3, the Planning Commission appointment.
Yeah.
I am going to be out of town representing the city in Washington, D.C., and I will not be available for that item. And I want to make a request to defer that for two weeks. And I'm hesitant to make a request solely for my own benefit, but I'm making a request solely for my own benefit.
Let me just check in. But Tony, is that feasible?
It would be feasible. I don't know if planning needs that person seated for the September meeting, but I can notify all of the candidates that we're deferring for two weeks. So I don't have a personal problem, but I can't answer for planning.
See, I know that the following week is going to be a long one, so we probably wouldn't put that one. You said two weeks, huh?
Yeah, two weeks.
Yeah.
I checked with the city manager.
Yeah.
A good date would be here.
That's a better date, I guess, huh?
Yeah.
Okay. So I know that there may be challenges with their availability as well, right?
Right. But, you know, I could, I could let them know. Usually they'll, they'll make it.
Okay.
But, yeah, I would notify them. I mean, two, this is far enough in advance.
Yeah.
I think it's not like a last minute.
Okay.
But, yeah, I was, just wasn't sure about planning.
Okay. So we'll do that, and if we need to be flexible for them on a different week, we can pick another week. Okay. Pages nine and 10. Pages 11 and 12. Pages 13 and 14. Page 15, 7.2, I understand members of the community would like to see us have a time certain. This is relatively short, particularly if a planning commission item is being moved. This is going to be a relatively short meeting, so we could say something like not before 3:00. Does that seem reasonable?
Sure does.
Okay.
Mayor, there's also some question as to whether or not the three multifamily housing bonds could also be brought up, like after consent, because in those cases, we do bring bond counsel and financial advisors and other people who are prepared to discuss it.
Right.
Should the council be interested in having details? Many cases, you don't.
Right.
I think the council's pretty well aware of what the process is for those multifamily, but we do bring them in, so they'll be sitting there.
So 4-2 to 4-4, you suggest we add those immediately after?
Consent.
After consent?
Because it could go fairly quickly, but if not, we have people there to answer your questions.
Yeah, agreed. Okay. And then with regard to adds, we have some proposed additions on a couple pages that have been submitted by the clerk, all on consent. There's, it's like eight, nine items there. So ask them, can the motion consider those as well?
So I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda for Tuesdays, September 17th, deferring item 3.3 for two weeks and scheduling items 4.2 to 4.4 after consent, as well as including a sunshine waiver for an add sheet for all the items that are on the add sheet.
Second.
Okay. Any comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's approved. We're on to the September 24th agenda. I think this one's going to be a doozy. Let's start on pages one and two. I know that we've got a class substantive afternoon agenda items, and I think we should at least ask the question, should we start immediately after closed session, maybe 11:00 a.m., something like that? But maybe we can come back to that if we've had a chance to look at the, the whole calendar here. We have no evening items, so we'll cancel the evening session. Is that right?
That's correct.
Of course, we'll have plenty of evening items. They'll just be left over from the afternoon. Okay. So on pages three and four, any changes? Pages five and six. Pages seven and eight.
Just to sort of clarification, it's the wrong one.
Pages nine and 10. Okay. Well, it's short, at least in, and in the number of items, I suspect a few of these are going to have quite a bit of community input. So what's the pleasure of the panel? Prefer to start early or start at our normal time?
I think we can start at our normal time since we don't have an evening session.
I agree.
Okay. All right. Then is there a motion?
Move approval of the Tuesday, September 24th agenda.
Second.
All right. And that's with the cancellation of evening session?
Oh, indeed.
Okay. All right. There are no cards. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. Okay. We're on to item B, which is a review of upcoming special meetings. Specifically, we have a study review of the study session on displacement. And several members of the committee would like to speak on this item. This is on September 16th. It's when we'll have the study session at 1:30, I believe. Don't we have a memo from Councilmember Peralis on this item? It doesn't show up here, but... Is, David, did you want to speak on that?
No. Sure.
I'm not sure, did everyone have a copy of the memo or?
It's posted.
It's posted? Okay.
Yeah. I noticed it was posted yesterday, yeah.
Okay. Well, good afternoon, committee members. Thank you for having me. David Tran with the Office of Councilmember Peralis. My remarks will be short. We put forth a memo for just a couple considerations for the upcoming study session. We've spoken with staff at OED, and it sounds like some of these things are amenable in their upcoming study sessions, so hopefully you can support this. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, David. Okay. Yeah, I reviewed the memo, certainly open to exploring all those questions. Why don't we go to public comment, and then we'll come back to the committee. I have Anil Babar, followed by Eddie Trong, Gustavo Gonzalez, and, oh, David. I know if you could just squeeze that handle and pull the mic up to, there you go. Thanks.
Thanks. Good afternoon, committee, mayor and council. Anil Babar with the California Apartment Association. On June 5th, at the Rules Committee meeting, when this item was first brought up to your attention, there was interest by several members of the committee that the representation on that study session be balanced, and that members of either the SVO or Housing Industries or the Apartment Association be invited or an economist speak to provide a more balanced viewpoint. Our industries have not been approached as far as the economist that has been selected is from UC Berkeley, as far as I'm aware of. And again, that was indicated that they wanted a more balanced approach, and even the economist. So again, none of this was approached, none of our organization were approached, and I don't believe that this panel of speakers that will be presented before you is going to be really, give you a fair shot of understanding the true issue, both from the issue of the point of view of tenants, but also, more importantly, from our point of view, how the people who are being affected by this, the property owners are going to be affected. So we would request that, and at this late stage in the campaign, we're not able to secure someone with three days left, so either reschedule it or, you know, it is entirely up to you how you want to proceed, but I don't think we're going to be, I don't think this is going to be a truly balanced approach to understanding the true scale of the problem. Thank you.
Okay. Eddie?
Mayor Liccardo, members of the Rules Committee, my name is Eddie Trong. I am the Director of Government Relations at the Silicon Valley Organization, the Region's Chamber of Commerce, representing over 1,200 businesses in Silicon Valley. I really would like to thank Mayor Liccardo, Councilmember Davis, and Councilmember Camus for first suggesting at the June 5th Rules Committee meeting that when any discussion of potential policies or discussions about how this would impact our city's rental housing providers or housing providers in general, as well as ways that we could not get in a way or reversing market forces or reversing the tide of development within the city of San Jose, that the business community be engaged in this process. And especially want to thank Councilmember Camus, because he suggested SVO, and yet to date, we have not received any significant outreach in terms of this regard. And we would like to help the council make a more informed and balanced discussion when it comes to these policy issues. Unfortunately, that outreach was not made. I will say, though, that we have been engaged significantly by the Office of Economic Development on small business anti-displacement. So we were very happy to be engaged in that process, and so it's a shame that our coalition of business, community members are not at the table when it comes to discussion. So I hope that the council will consider these thoughts, that, that a more balanced perspective needs to be made at the study session. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gonzalez?
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Gustavo Gonzalez. I'm here wearing the Santa Clara County Association Realtor head as their president, and I'm just sharing the same concern that you just heard from the two other folks, that we were not invited to this discussion, even though, as I read the, the impact and the goals that you're looking to, to meet, I think they're worthy and we need to do these things, like increase the number of low-income people and people of color who are in long-term affordable homes. Boy, that's really important if we want to have a nice diverse community. But we can't do it when the voices of the folks that have an impact in this are not at the table. So I'd love to see that. But really, the way to solve this is not by more regulation, in my humble opinion. What we need to do is build substantially more housing. What do I mean by that? That means that the new developments that are going in, instead of being 20 stories, need to be 40 or 50 stories. We really need to get creative on building a lot more housing. Now, I own a few apartment buildings myself, and I house folks that are low-income, and I love them, and they're wonderful people. I would love to be able to take my little buildings and build a 30 or 40-story building and house a lot more people. But if we keep adding these sort of anti-displacement rules and regulations and costs, there's no way a mom and pop like myself could ever do that, right? So encourage more housing, more development, get a more balanced approach, and I'm sure we can solve these issues, because housing is not something that requires basic research out of AT&amp;T Bell Labs. It just requires the will of our political leaders, like all of you, taking on the NIMBYism and helping out with some of these rules and regulations like CEQA, and we can get it done. Thanks.
Thank you. Dave, I think you've heard voices from community of folks representing housing providers for the most part. Is there some room or way in which we can provide time for them to present a perspective?
Yeah, and so I'll ask Kim and Jackie to kind of help in terms of what we can do to make that, you know, and integrate that into the presentation. So I was only kind of recently aware of kind of the concerns, so, and I'll just say that this whole schedule for this study session has gotten us, obviously, jammed up. It's typically, we're not coming to the Rules Committee on the Wednesday before we're having the study session on Monday. As you know, that's not normally the way we do things, but it kind of just got jammed up on us, so unfortunately, we find ourselves kind of in a really tight predicament, but I'll ask Kim to kind of weigh in.
Just some, some reactions. So this is really a first study session on this topic, and as you can see, under the purpose, we're not presenting any policies or strategies. It's really an initial framing and discussion and understanding of the field. So that being said, I think we can look at the program and figure out how, in a number of places, we can ensure that there's context and that there's balance. But quite frankly, in the outreach so far on the small business, as Mr. Trong said, we've really listened to impacted small businesses, and on the residential displacement, we've really listened to residents impacted by displacement. But we fully expect, as we keep doing this work over the next several months, and we start to talk about potential solutions, that we will have opportunities for broader stakeholder engagement on both topics.
Yeah. So the primary focus of this, the anti-displacement on the housing side, is really looking at definitions. What does it mean? How are people in our community impacted by it? And so actually, what we really spent a lot of time was trying to get voices to the table that rarely come to city council meetings. So we've been very challenged in the past in the work that we've done to try to get people who are extremely low-income, who are working multiple jobs, who live in our communities, who are being impacted by these changes, to actually come to meetings. And so majority of the work right now has just been engaging residents, who typically don't come to a city council meeting. When we get to the solution piece, and we have had, some of the participants here have actually come to our public meetings that we've had, that have framed the issue, and we have talked about some of the solutions, so, but the goal is, after we agree on what are we trying to accomplish with an anti-displacement strategy? That's one of the primary reasons we wanted to have a study session, is we want to make sure we all agree of what the vision or the outcome of this work should be, so that we can bring back appropriate tools that are addressing our concerns. So when we, as we begin to work on those tools, that is absolutely the best place to have apartment association, the realtors, the businesses, because the tools will absolutely impact them, and we need to hear from them what the impact would be and what revisions or suggestions or other ideas. But this, the initial study session is really framing, what is displacement, what is displacement in our community? What does it look like? Who's impacted by it? And, I mean, I think, is it really a problem here in San Jose?
So I made a mistake in not calling all of the cards. My apologies. Chrissy, and I'm always going to get your name wrong. It's Garavalia?
That is correct.
Phew. Garavalia? Oh, thank you, Chrissy.
No worries. All right. Chrissy Garavalia, Government Affairs Director for the Santa Clara County Association of Realtors. With respect to the concept of setting the stage for the dialogue, data needs to be present just as much as the community perspective. And one of the priorities for the National Association of Realtors has been to establish ways to build the opportunity gap, especially when it comes to homeownership amongst people of color and low-income. I think equally as important for the city to base their research and data on hearing those voices. It's important for those of us who are also doing the research to hear their voices as well. So when you do hold those meetings out in the community, it's just as good for us to be there to hear their perspective as well, so that when we come back with research that we've conducted to educate this body on our data, we've taken their perspective into consideration as well. So again, just to reiterate, being at the table is paramount, regardless of whether it's a community meeting or a formal council meeting, because that helps us establish better data criteria ourselves as well, and helps you in return. So thank you so much.
Thank you. I appreciate Jackie and Kim, your perspective. My concern, my hesitation, is that, you know, the framing of the problem is often very determinative in outcome, in terms of solutions you get to. And so I can imagine there would be a sense that if the framing and the introduction of the problem and the setting of the stage is done without any direct engagement from them, by the time we get to the solutions, there's going to be very little investment on their part in terms of believing that any of these solutions have to do with their input. And it's fair to say that there'll be a perception that these are solutions that are imposed rather than solutions that we've all been working on together. And so I'm concerned about simply saying, we're going to do the framing, and we're going to do it without at least that perspective. And so I just ask if there's a way, if, I know there's not much time here. We've got till September 16th. Was that four days? Five days? Yeah.
Yeah, it's Monday.
Yeah. If, you know, there is someone who is sufficiently credentialed, experienced, et cetera, who can present data in some way from the perspective of housing providers, it would be helpful to at least have that perspective.
Right. So I, I guess I just want to better understand what, as again, as we're thinking about what housing providers would be presenting, because I want to make sure then we have the right housing provider, because even within that group of people, there are many different perspectives.
Yeah. And so just for whatever it's worth, from my perspective, I know there was some discussion about homeownership, but I don't think we're terribly concerned about displacement of homeowners in this city. What we are really concerned about is displacement of renters, because that's sort of the reality that we're facing. And so the extent that there is a perspective about what housing providers, meaning apartment owners and folks in the industry, can be doing or have done to help to alleviate displacement or reduce the impacts, those are things that we'd be interested in.
Right. And I guess that's why we were thinking that this wasn't the time, because as you stated, those are, again, heading towards a solution. They're not really framing the problem. It's more of, I'm a housing developer, what can I do to, to reduce those impacts or leading us down the solution path versus who's being impacted by displacement? What are their characteristics? What are their incomes?
Well, then perhaps maybe it would be the perspective of someone who's, who understands the challenges of paying bills to maintain an apartment building, and there is obviously appreciation in cost of running apartment buildings, and those costs are real, and those prod housing providers to increase rents, and we know that is a huge source of all this. So having that perspective about, again, framing the problem is helpful, because it is often viewed as an us-versus-them discussion, as it's framed. And I think what you're hearing from them is, we don't want it to be us-versus-them. We'd like to be at the table and at least explaining, if rents are being driven up, here's some of the factors that are driving those rents up, and by the way, some of those factors have to do with us as a city and what we're doing. And if we're doing things that are driving costs up, that are subsequently then causing them to increase rents, that is part of problem framing as well. And if we don't hear from that perspective, then we'll be jumping to solutions without that perspective at all and framing the problem.
Yeah. So I think certainly we don't want any perspectives excluded from this process. So I guess we'll have to kind of think about how we can, you know, incorporate that into this, and hopefully in a meaningful way, so that, you know, those perspectives don't feel like they've just been kind of tagged on to the end. So let, just, we'll do our best to integrate that, reach out, connect, and, and make sure those perspectives are incorporated.
Okay. Are there comments or questions?
Yeah. I'm not sure that this is going to get done by Monday. What I would prefer is that we defer this until the next study session, so that we can be better prepared. You know, I think during the last meeting, I think Councilmember Davis suggested somebody from Stanford be approached, and the persons, you know, from Berkeley, I think are okay, but that seems to be a very one-sided perspective. So I, my motion would be to defer this and for, until the next opportunity study session. What is the next opportunity for a study session?
I think the next opportunity would be September 27th. We had, I think originally targeted the special meeting on sexual assaults, but I believe we're moving that, so that does free up a time for, that would be our next available date.
And then that's, that's what will be my motion, at least give staff more than three days to, because let's face it, Saturday and Sunday isn't exactly a working day. Maybe give them a little chance to, to put something together, and then let, let us know if, if that's not enough of an opportunity to get something together.
Second.
All right. Discussion, updates. Councilmember Davis?
Yeah. I seconded the motion, because I completely agree. We gave pretty clear direction in June that we wanted there to be a balanced viewpoint presented to us, and I'm, I'm just concerned, there doesn't seem to be anything in here. It talks about existing conditions for San Jose, but there's nothing in here about the economics of why prices might increase over time or what's actually happening. So I'm, I'm concerned about that, the market perspective and the perspective of the, the property owners that, that face increasing costs and why they, why that also might lead to displacement, but the, the solutions may be different than just landlords are greedy, so we have to cap everything. I think we have to be more inclusive in the viewpoints that we have at the study session, so that we can include more perspectives and more possibilities for solutions.
Comments, questions? Vice Mayor?
I'm supportive of the motion, but I just want some clarity. So if we move this out to the 27th, are we asking staff to come back with a different perspective from an academic standpoint versus an industry standpoint, so that they have clear direction in terms of what they're, what we're asking them to do?
Just listening to the conversation, I could envision us, you know, adding a focus section, that's something like market and property, property owner's perspective on, on displacement. And we would also make sure in the, kind of the overview and the context that is presented upfront, that we're kind of presenting a holistic context for this issue. That way, we could have a kind of a focused perspective on that and try to get a panel of some of the people.
So I would say we did try to get an economist that had a different perspective on anti-displacement, and that there wasn't anybody in this particular area that had that perspective. And I do want to say that it's certainly fine, we can focus on the market, but again, what you would learn in the anti-displacement presentation that we're going to do is that it's not just market forces that we're talking about when we talk about anti-displacement. So there are other ways that people get displaced. It's demolition, possibly because of new development, but we've also seen it in disasters. We've, we've talked about how it has a result of cultural changes in a community that result in displacement occurring. So the issue is broader than just development, but we're certainly happy to include this particular perspective that focuses on that aspect of displacement.
Jackie, let me just challenge that a little bit. I mean, it seems to me, I understand there are lots of other factors, but fundamentally, isn't it about rising rents? I mean, isn't that really what thousands of our families are struggling with? And wouldn't we want to understand better what is driving rents up?
That's predominantly what's happening in San Jose.
Okay.
And we are, you know, I will remind you, we're doing the cost of development study that you'll be seeing as well, and so, you know, we are definitely delving into the issues of cost, and you, you do have an opportunity to hear that perspective, and you'll hear, well, you won't hear it before this, but yes. So it, the departments, both OED and Housing, are working on providing an overall framework of what's driving up the cost of development in San Jose.
Okay. But what's driving up the cost of development isn't what's driving rents, right? Those are two different economic phenomenon, and they may be related and they may not be completely related, and that's why I think it's really important. Actually- be completely related. And that's why I think it's really important. Actually, the folks you heard speak, and really primarily speak on behalf of the housing providers, not necessarily housing developers. So, I just think it's, it's important that we disaggregate this to markets, to the extent that that's... Councilmember Rice?
Thank you. I, I, I'll support the motion on, on the floor. I do believe that sometimes we don't know what we don't know, right? And we need somebody else, an expert in that area to help us and to facilitate that conversation. So, I'd like to ask, I didn't hear exactly, what is that housing provider? And I realize there were some criteria that we were utilizing, which is property owners or folks who know, understand the cost of maintaining and whatever it is else that is, goes along with owning a property. Who is, off the top of your head, are you thinking of anybody?
No, I think that's our challenge. We welcome suggestions from anybody, but to find a person or persons who can provide that apartment owner's perspective on displacement, that's what we would be looking for. And it may need to be a combination of people.
Great. I would envision, we would want an existing apartment owner who could talk about why we see rising costs and rents, existing rents, and then a developer perspective on why we see increases in rents.
Great. I, I love that you're asking the community, that respective community that knows its, its business the best, to come forward and add to the picture. I also think that we need to have somebody else who's an expert. I think you said you wanted to have an economist come in. If it's not an economist, somebody similar, maybe a professor in our local educational institutions that can come in and give us more qualitative data.
So, we're really lucky in the Bay Area, because Berkeley is a, it is an educational institution, and they have an institute that looks specifically at this. And so, we did ask them, as part of this study, to pull, you know, the wide range of voices about displacement when they do their presentation, and include an academic review of what other studies there have been on displacement, in order to provide a broader focus on that. Because again, it was hard to get somebody who, who didn't necessarily agree that displacement occurs. I think there's a, an understanding that displacement occurs, gentrification is occurring. The question is, is it good or is it bad? It tends to be where you begin to see different academics then go different directions. But even looking at the literature that talks about gentrification as being good, and I think, and I've said this publicly, that gentrification can be good when you have results where residents can stay in the area, and you have tools that help our existing residents who are able to benefit from those new investments.
I think it's just important if we can bring a couple of housing providers, and so that way, it's maybe not anecdotal to that person and their, their specific experience. But, you know, just a breadth of, of those housing providers, and, and maybe somebody that we would call an expert. So, thank you.
Yeah, I think, you know, the folks who spoke, and thank you for the reason that, Councilmember Martinez, the folks who spoke, obviously have strong views about this. And so, it's fair for us, I think, to put the work back on them and say, who's an expert in the field, who accurately understands the microeconomics of, and publishes regularly on it, or researches regularly on it, can offer us some, some view about what's happening here locally, I think, be helpful to understand if they've got ideas. Councilmember?
Yeah, and I wanted to thank Jackie for coming to my office and actually explaining even the next steps. I think you gave me a sheet. One of the things that we should consider as well is this new study group, which is going to be part of the outcomes that you are hoping for. The study group itself, I think, is very biased in its, in its leanings, and you had the Working Partnership Law Foundation, and you had absolutely no business people on this, no understanding of economics on this study group. And I would hope that in this study session, if you're going to come back with a working group for the future, that you would include people from, from the business world or the, with economic credentials, and, and whatever you think, whatever you may think of Berkeley, some of us don't have the same opinions about some of the research that they've conducted in the past. And San Jose State's, I mean, that's where I graduated from in economics. They have a very good department, and they're not as far as Berkeley either. And I have to say, they graduated quite a few good people that, that serve us in our community, and I'm hoping that we can reach out to some of the, the local economic intelligence out there.
Sure. So, I just want to clarify that the group that came together, which is a group that was funded and supported by the Policy Link Network, it was very specific in terms of who could, who we could ask to participate. And the community partners were defined as community partners. So, they had to be people who actually worked within neighborhoods and worked with tenants and residents, resident people. So, it, having a business person would not have qualified us for this particular opportunity. So, the grant itself kind of narrowed who we could participate with, because really, the point was to do this very deep community engagement.
Right. And I would venture to say that you're going to get a great representation of one perspective out of this group, but it doesn't represent the whole picture when it comes to the economic, the entire economics of why people are being displaced. And I have a lot more people that are being displaced. I mean, nobody's talking about some of the senior citizens in my district who are being displaced from houses that they actually own, and no longer have the income to stay in, so that they're leaving, because their house is worth a lot of money. So, either, and then they can't afford, afford all the, the property taxes on their bills, so they end up leaving out of necessity and not necessarily out of the fact that they want to downsize. They're being forced to downsize or move away because of a lot of economic pressures that are being put on them by our, by all the rising costs that are in this area. And so, there's a lot more to this picture, and there's a lot more people being displaced other than renters. And so, this is, this is the hopes that I have for, for balance in this discussion. And so, I appreciate you helping on this. And we can add, I'd be happy to add the Councilmember Roel Paralas' recommendation as well. If it's okay with a second or...
Yes.
Okay. Other comments? Okay. On the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. All right, on to the public record for August 22nd.
Motion to note and file?
Second.
So, no cards. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we have the consent items under item G.
Motion to approve consent calendar. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, on to number two. Story Road, I see Councilmember Carrasco is here. Councilmember Carrasco, would you like to, to speak on this item?
Thank you. Am I on? Thank you so much for having, for having me here. A couple of weeks ago, we had a, a hit and run, which ended in a fatality. And in fact, and this isn't even updated on my talking points, but just this morning, we had another hit and run right on the exact same intersection. Thankfully, this individual was not, did not suffer a loss of life, but was nonetheless injured as a result of a, of a, of a vehicle that was crossing that same intersection. The fatality accounts for one of the 44 collisions that have been reported at this crossing. And as we know, in many of these, I'll say, more challenging neighborhoods, this is in District Five, this is my district, many times, these accidents or incidents like these go unreported. So, we're assuming that there might be many more accidents that we haven't heard of, or that haven't been reported, that the police have not been alerted to. Both roadways, both Story and Jackson are designated Vision Zero corridors, and they have been identified for needed improvements to increase safety, to prevent future loss of life and injury. I'm hoping that you're all familiar with our beautiful East Side, but for those of you who have not yet had the pleasure, this is a very impacted intersection. Jackson, both Jackson and Story see a great deal of pedestrians, folks who are transit dependent, folks who are actually using our bike lanes. And so, it becomes even a greater priority for us to, to really put in, into place measures that will guarantee the safety of our residents. I do want to mention that I have a very high concentration in that area of schools, and so, children and women, women with strollers are constantly crossing this intersection. I cross it on a daily basis. I get off on, on 680 and Jackson, make a right on Jackson, and then hit Story Road and make a left on Story Road. And so, it's, it's a very, very, very busy intersection. And I won't mention who it is, but one of my team members actually just last year had a horrible fall on her bike there, and we had to pull her, she called me, oh, I said she, my staffer called me, and fortunately, I was around the corner to help my staffer get up and get moving because of, because her concern was really the traffic that was coming through. And so, we've had some personal experiences. If you live on the East Side, this is, you know that this is a very, very heavily traveled corridor. So, I'm asking today with the memo that the mayor and I have both co-signed, that the Department of Transportation begin engineering work on these segments and return in the mid-year budget with a proposal to begin working on improvements as soon as possible. Again, because of the increase of pedestrians and cyclists, this just becomes a real priority for us.
Thank you, Councilmember. And of course, I support as well. And thanks to John Risto, I know that he and his team are working, and we'll be happy, happy to work on, see if we can come up with a funding strategy and get going on design. So, thanks, John, for all that help. Okay, any comments?
Motion to approve.
Second. Councilmember Kenneth?
Yeah, I also, I also wholeheartedly agree with this process. But I also do have, I mean, I've actually been complaining about this to you, Mayor, for yourself about Vista Park, an area which you know well. We literally had somebody last week die on that street, and then six months ago on that. And then, we've had 106 accidents on Branham near Vista Park. And that is an area that I've been, you know, it's, it's, what are we doing to look at the hot zones, like the, the ones that have the most accidents? I think we need to really take a look at those, because something needs to be done. I've been waiting for something to be done on Branham for, since I've been in office. And, and there's been a lot of deaths there.
So, John is here, and maybe you can talk a little bit about the corridors we focused on.
Yeah, Councilmember Paralas, Director of Transportation, and specifically to the roadway that you're speaking of, we're actually doing some designs right now that, as, as you had pointed out to us previously, there are certainly some areas that there are natural crossings to the park, on Vista Park in that area. We're actually looking at a mid-block crosswalk that would actually make that a little safer in that specific location that, that has a lot of people trying to get across the roadways. And then, there was a fatality out there as well. So, we focus on wherever those fatalities or crashes are occurring, and that's where our efforts are going. In this instance, this is just another one of the large roadways that we're trying to get ahead of. We just need the funding to actually start putting some of that in place. But we're actually working on the one that you're...
Yeah, and, and again, I'm not necessarily looking at mine, because I know I've been working really hard to get something done in that area. But there are other places that have high, high, you know, death counts.
Crash rates, right.
Yeah, crash rates.
Those are, we're focusing on those as, we've identified them as Vision Zero corridors. They don't all have funding yet. We're, we'd certainly love to have some more funding to actually put in place the, the implementation of the ideas that have come out of the safety audits for all those corridors. It's just a matter of the funding to do the implementation.
Yeah. And that's 14 corridors right now, John?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thirteen quarter, 13, I think.
13.
Yeah, I've actually traveled a lot in, recently, in fact, many times in District Five, and, and District Eight, and Seven for that matter. You know, a lot of people, I think, one thing that I've noticed in driving on some of these streets that go from east-west is that their signals are not timed well. And it seems like you are, if you don't really speed up, then you're going to hit every single red light, one after the other. And so, you might want to try, I mean, I'm, I'm giving you experience. I don't know what you've done, but I've just, I mean, people really get frustrated because they're trying to beat the light before it turns red again. And if you travel the speed limit on some of these streets, you will hit every red light, especially when you go near the highways.
Right. So, signal timing is as much art as it is science, and we're trying to balance those needs of both motorists, as well as the other folks that use those intersections, pedestrians. That then makes it a little difficult on each individual's signal. But we're always looking at, we're continually re-timing signals throughout the city to try to meet that balance and make it, make it work as best we can.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, any other questions or comments? All right, on the motion, we have no cards. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Councilmember Carrasco.
Thank you.
Okay, item number three is a Work to Future Board appointment. I'm appointing Chad Bahorkis as Public Sector Representative to Work to Future Board of Directors.
Motion to approve?
Second.
There actually is no, no motion. It's information the mayor gets to pick whoever...
Okay, reverse motion.
All right, I take that back. I'm announcing that. Thanks, everybody.
Then they withdraw their second.
All right. Item four is the Equity Study Session. I see Councilmember Martinez is here. Would you like to speak, sir?
I would, I would.
All right.
Thank you. Long time no see.
[laughing]
I just, I really don't have a whole lot of comments. I was here more in case folks had questions. Obviously, one of the other signers is Councilmember Arenas, who's here as well. But essentially, it's about the Equity Study Session that's, I think, currently scheduled for October 4th. And so, I, I think one of the initial questions I had, given the movement of study sessions, it seems, that I heard earlier, I'm curious as to whether this would be impacted by some of that movement.
Not currently, Councilmember. And, and we do still need to bring forward the Agenda to Rules, but at this point, you're correct, we're targeting the 4th, and, and we would like to continue with that date.
Okay, I appreciate it. And so, let me just give you a few comments, just of the, of the memorandum. It's signed by, it's signed by Councilmember Paralas, myself, Councilmember Carrasco, Councilmember Esparza, and Councilmember Arenas. And really, it's just things we've thought about with regard to direction and what we think would make the Equity Discussion Study Session most fruitful. And that's why I'll just very quickly go through some of the items. It's engagement from knowledgeable staff from other jurisdictions, for example. We thought that that would be helpful in the discussions, to add, either answer questions in person, or certainly via conference call, or teleconference, whatever may work. And then, the other is a subject matter expert with assistance in assisting cities with equity programs and solutions, and to the extent that's possible, I'd really appreciate, we'd really appreciate that. The other is, in recognition that many city employees have actively been discussing equity within the city for some time. And so, to the extent we could provide, I think, some leadership opportunities and really spaces for some employees to sort of share their perspective and experiences, and where they maybe see the city going, or where they think we should go, I think that would be important. And number four is just a local funder, or someone with experience on race and equity to be part of the discussion to answer questions. I'm not sure if that exists, but to the extent someone like that, or an organization is, is present in the community, I think that would be helpful. And then, number five, which I think happens naturally already on many occasions, on many topics, so I expect it wouldn't be, it would happen in this case. But that is just for, for each council office to be briefed on this, so that we were all very well prepared and understand sort of what to expect as this comes forward. But that's the gist of the recommendation. I don't think it's, you know, it's not a sort of novel, sort of forward-thinking thing, but... But I think these are important components to really consider as we go out and really bring together very diverse perspectives, both from the community as well as councilmembers, on how to sort of bridge some of this that we believe exists.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Aranaz?
No, I think Councilmember Jimenez already said it, and I think it's just similar to the discussion we were having earlier about displacement and having, being able to have a really comprehensive discussion that's well-informed, that's productive and positive. I think these are just some of these, some of these asks, I think, are going to help set up that discussion for that.
Councilmember Kinnis?
Yeah, I just wanted to, in the interest of being comprehensive and well-informed, which I strive to be, I wanted to see if we're going to dive into any of the granular, you know, aspects of this. And I've been asking for this for a while, to see, you know, where are we allocating our resources? And, you know, by whatever, if it's by district, if it's by census tract, is that going to be part of the discussion?
Well, we certainly have an opportunity to still shape it. And I think everyone here is aware. I've spoken to every single councilmember in terms of kind of just getting input. So certainly have listened and understood that. And so I think there will be a component around kind of what we are doing, how we do things. You know, I don't think we were planning on kind of getting into a comparison of one council district versus another in terms of expenditures. But I think, you know, at the program level, you know, helping the council understand kind of how programmatically we're spending dollars.
Well, I actually appreciate the general level, but I'm not sure that our colleagues will be satisfied with that answer because I think a lot of them think that they're not getting resources in their districts. And unless we could prove that they're going to get resources, or we're, or if, unless we could find out why they're not getting resources, then we won't really get to the crux of the facts. And so if we don't break it out by district or census tract, then we actually won't be satisfying the true intent of the study, which is to find out, are we, you know, spending our assets wisely? As I think, am I misrepresenting the study in any way?
I, I mean, my perspective is I think that's too simply, too simplistic a way to put it. I don't, one, there's a few things.
I tend to be simple, I'm sorry.
No, no, I appreciate simple. But that is, I don't think, you know, and certainly we have another signer of the memo here. But I don't think the goal was to simply look at where we're spending the money.
No, and that's not, that's not, maybe, maybe we're looking at, okay, if we don't know where we're spending the money, then we don't know how we could fix some of the places where we're not spending.
Yeah.
Because we only really have control over, the only thing that the city council really has is the ability to spend money in different areas, right?
So I would, what I would say to you is, I think, at a deeper level, what we're interested in, what I'm interested in seeing, and I hope you are as well, is how, not necessarily where those resources are dispersed, but how they're being spent, right? Whether we really are, in fact, touching everyone in an equitable way around the city and everything the city does. So it certainly, I think at some point, it may be helpful to look at the money and how much money is spent in District 10 as opposed to District 2. But for me, I'm a little uncomfortable getting into the, you're getting it, I'm not getting it. I don't think that's helpful. And I think that's, you know, and especially in these times, I think that presents sort of a divisive type of mentality that I don't think it's worth the city venturing down. You know, I think we're one city. It's just more looking at and really understanding deeply how the city, its resources, its departments, interactions that take place, how all that touches the residents, and whether we can do a better job at that. And so at least that's my thinking.
Yeah, first and foremost, I know that we could do a better job in many, many different areas. And without analyzing the programs that we're spending money on, as to accountability, I think, is what, I mean, I'm trying to simplify things in my own head.
Right.
Like you're talking about accountability here, is, are the programs working, or?
Yeah, and I guess the other thing, and just a last comment, Mayor, and then I'll see the floor, is just simply that I think this is one of many steps we're going to take to try to sincerely try to peel back the onion, try to figure out exactly how we're doing as a city. And so I don't think any of us expected that, signing on this memo, that we would, you know, we would have the end-all, be-all discussion on the 4th that's going to open this up, and we're going to understand everything. I think it's just an entree to a broader, deeper discussion. And that's really what I think.
And if I may, you know, I think, I think what we're hoping to do in terms of framing this up, and I've said this before, we, I've personally heard 11 different perspectives on what equity is. So let's kind of listen and learn a little bit about kind of what's out there. And let's see if we can't get to a point where we, as, you know, our council, kind of get to a point of kind of, what are we talking about when San Jose is talking about equity? And how do we move forward, what are the next steps after that?
And that's, and that's what I'm getting to. As a previous discussion, we were talking about framing. You know, we're talking about framing, how do we frame this discussion? What are the city's responsibilities towards equity? You know, the, you know, I don't know. Otherwise, we're studying something that could be such a blobby, big thing.
Councilmember Kinnis, maybe I can just offer a suggestion? Because I've been grappling with this myself. There's no question this is a really important conversation. But at some point, we've got to land this plane.
Yeah.
And we got to answer the fundamental question, which is, what are we going to do about it? What are we going to do about it? And it seems to me that, I'm happy to support this memorandum if it's attached to one particular set of additional language, which is, there's going to be an emphasis on outcomes. That fundamentally, all the talking we do about equity and the abstract is nice and pleasant, but it doesn't have any impact on whether or not a child from a low-income family is going to have a better chance at succeeding in school, or a homeless individual is going to get a better opportunity to get job training and a job, or a mom is going to get access to childcare. If it doesn't have some real impact on outcomes, we're just, we're just in an echo chamber. And, you know, I know there's cities that are spending lots of money on creating offices of equity and all kinds of things. And there's suggestions somehow we're behind because we haven't created an office. We have the most thinly-staffed city hall in the nation, sadly. I know we all wish we had more staff, we all wish we had more resources. But we're going to have to figure out a way to do this, either with other people's resources, or we're going to have to do it on a shoestring because that's just how we do things, right? This is what we got. And so I think if we're able to ground this in some way, the focus on outcomes, that would be enormously helpful. So we're not spinning our wheels chasing, well, we're not spending as much as they are on creating an office. Because creating an office is not the outcome we want. The outcome we want is how are we affecting the many thousands of families in our city who are struggling? And so I would be happy to support a motion that just says, we're going to have an emphasis on outcomes.
Vice Mayor?
Yeah, so actually, I was thinking along those same lines. I kind of identified three areas that I want to see. One is definition. You know, clearly define what, we're all talking about equity with the same, from the same page, in the same paragraph. Also, expectations. There's a certain expectation from the community of, if we launch an equity program, what is that going to mean to them? So to properly set expectations for ourselves and also for the community. And then the third I had was outcomes. I think outcomes is critical. Now, we all have our different definitions of outcome. Outcomes, those of you who've worked with me know that my focus is on building wealth in the community. So that would be an outcome that I'd want to see out of an equity program. But we all have our different definitions of what that means. So those are the three things that I want to see coming out of this study session.
Councilmember Aranaz?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I think, for your words, I would agree with what you just finished saying. I'd just like to ask for us to keep an open mind about what we're talking about in terms of equity, because you brought up a really good point. We don't have a collective definition of what equity is. And maybe what we're, the feedback that we're providing is based on an already pre-assumed notion of what that is. And so I think that already taints the bottom line, if you will. We are in public sector. This is public service. And so we have to make sure, and I think we've, the City of San Jose has always done a really good job of being transparent and being true to residents and providing those core services the best that we can. This is just another framework to do the work that we're doing. And I think most departments already run on performance-based outcomes in their respective fields. And I think tying those into an equity framework makes sense to me as well. So I agree. I think that we just need to have the discussion so that we can get to where we want to go as a city together.
Okay, is there a motion?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Would that include some focus on outcomes? Councilmember Aranaz?
Actually, I want to expand the definitions, expectations, and outcomes.
Expectations and outcomes?
Can you repeat that again, Vice Mayor?
Definitions, expectations, and outcomes.
So just, and so keep in mind, that's fine. You know, we will bring him back, the proposed agenda, to rules. And I think at that point, anticipate probably another discussion around whether we've hit the target or not on this.
Clear.
So, to Councilmember Aranaz?
Yes, I'm happy to add that to this memo, of course.
So Mayor, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Just with regards to the outcomes and the expectations. That sounds fair to me. But the question I have is, is that related to this study session? Like, we expect that's going to emerge from this one study session?
The point is that if somebody's coming from Seattle or San Francisco, for example, that's a suggestion in the first direction. I just talk about my own focus on outcomes. Certainly talking about what they do and how they do is helpful and interesting. But what I really want to know is, what are the outcomes, right? What are they trying to get accomplished, and are they actually getting to a goal?
Correct. So, but that, I mean, so I don't disagree with you. And that would be wrapped up in the information they're going to provide.
We hope so.
What I, so I appreciated your analogy of, you know, we get to land the plane at some point. And I very much appreciate that. But I don't wish to, to, I mean, certainly, we want this to the extent we can reach a definition and such, is resolve it and explore how to, how to resolve this within the community to the extent it exists at some point. But I'd rather, I'm not interested to rush the landing of the plane. We don't really know where the destination is.
Yeah, and I'm not suggesting anyone rush it. I'm also, though, not utterly convinced that we're all going to agree on the academic definition of equity, or that's necessary for us to actually take action that's going to meaningfully improve the state of equity in this city. And so while these conversations in the abstract are important and are useful, it is really important that, I think, we are constantly having these conversations with a focus on how are we going to improve the quality of life for those who are struggling in our city? And rather than simply endless hours of discussion about how we define equity.
Yeah. I appreciate that. I just, you know, just reiterate something I said when we originally discussed this, the full city council, is I don't, I don't purport to know exactly what that looks like or what it is. And so I think it's going to take time to do that. And if we really are sincerely committed in finding it and finding that true north, equity, whatever that may be. And I know it's going to be challenging, and maybe you arrive at a common sort of definition. But I would much rather do it right than do it quick, if that makes sense.
Yeah, I would just submit, we could have a task force on freedom and spend the same amount of time debating what freedom means to all of us. I don't believe we need to precisely agree in order to find things that we can do that we can all agree on that will make a situation better.
I look forward for it being a productive study session.
Good luck.
Okay. Any other comments on motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Moving on to item five, which is monthly report of our city auditor. Joe?
Good afternoon, Joe Royce, City Auditor. I'm here to present our monthly report activities for August of 2019. This past month, we issued the audit of the Form 700s, which you all heard yesterday. The next up on our, for us, is the audit of procurement card expenditures, which will be on to PIS Vis next week. We have a few others which we'll be releasing later in the month for October. That'd be the utility and street improvement in lieu fees, and then our semi-annual recommendation status update. With that, I can have, happy to answer any questions and ask the approved report.
Any questions?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Vice Mayor?
Yes, Joe. On, I guess this didn't make your report, it's probably in the bucket of audits that you're not even, haven't even evaluated yet. But I made a suggestion on doing a audit on police staffing levels. And I want to modify that to be an audit on police staffing levels as well as communication positions, based on the conversation that we had yesterday in council, and to make a request that is raised in terms of a priority.
So in terms of the police staffing, so we did look at that. I know that there's, there's work within the department looking at staffing levels. And I know they did an analysis a couple years back. In terms of communications, I think we, in the Communications Division, I think we do have some open audit recommendations from our 911-311 audit earlier this year, and we'll be following up on those. They did provide a little information yesterday at council with the response to the grand jury, but we'll be following up. And those will be included in our recommendation status update. And I can talk to you offline on those more specifically if you'd like.
Okay. But I also would still like to see the police staffing. Even though you said that they're doing work.
Yeah.
To move that up into priorities. But thank you.
Okay, so just to understand, Vice Mayor, are you making a motion to expand the scope of the audit?
No, I'm going to defer to Joe's recommendation that as far as communication is concerned, that's already being worked on, that there's going to be a follow-up with that anyway.
We'll be providing a status update on where they are with the recommendations we had earlier this year. We can, I can put it in the list of things to consider for next year's work plan if that's something you would like us to look at more fully. And like I said, we can talk a little bit more, talk through.
Yeah, I'm willing to talk offline about that because obviously, that's something that has been identified.
Yeah.
For a while, as being a significant priority in terms of communication staffing. So we could talk about that offline. But I also still would like to see the police staffing audit moved up as a priority.
So that's not currently on our work plan?
I know.
So are you, are you asking us to put it on our work plan? Or is that something for future consideration for future work plans? I guess that's my question.
Well, I'll make a formal motion to accept your report with that, that one modification, to put that on your work plan.
Okay, so that would go under assignments not yet started? Is that the idea?
Yeah.
Yes, that's where it would go.
Okay. So there's the motion. Is there a second on the motion?
Second.
Okay, Joe, did you want to offer, in terms of workload and so forth, is that something you can absorb?
It's something we can add. I can't say, you know, generally, we put some, a few extra audits on our work plan, knowing that some things might fall back if there's, because of priorities. And in terms of when we would get to it, I can't speak to that just yet. I know we have some teams freeing up, but that wasn't one that, that kind of identified potentially some projects that would be coming up sooner. And that wasn't, obviously, wasn't one of them. So I'll look at what we can do. I guess that's what I can answer.
Okay. So perhaps maybe on your next report, could you come back with that and whatever other items you were scoping? And then perhaps if there's any desire to reconsider the priorities, we can do that then. But for now, we would add it with this motion.
That's fair.
Okay. All right, on the motion?
I just had a good question. And I usually agree with Councilmember Jones wholeheartedly on many of these issues. But what I'm thinking is, by the time he gets, he gets the start, the report started and then completed, the facts will have changed. And the report will be less, you know, worthy, if you will, because our employment changes quickly. Right now, in our police department, we're staffing up fast, you know?
Well, it's a present audit, but it's also would be forward-looking, too, in terms of where our staffing should be, you know, five years from now, 10 years from now, as well as our current staffing.
That's going to, I know that's going to raise lots of issues that Joe may decide are well beyond his office's purview. Could we maybe come back with a proposed scope and then talk about this scope a little bit?
Sure.
And maybe in our next meeting, we'll, because you can't get to it anyway, I assume, right, Joe? Even if it's added?
Not, not in any, not soon.
Yeah, you've got all these other ones. Yeah, you've got all these other ones. So, I feel like this might be fruitful conversation when Joe comes back with a proposed scope, and then we can figure out. Because I imagine there may be a lot of folks who want to be in that conversation about how big the department should be, our budget office, our police chief, a few other folks.
Quite a few people.
Yeah. And Joe may not want that hot potato wrapped foil placed on his lap.
I'll give him some political cover. I got you, Joe.
Okay, so for now, we'd just be adding it, and then you'd be coming back. Okay. Okay. On the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. Okay, we're on to climate emergency resolution, and yes, we do mean it's an emergency, even though it's listed sixth on the agenda. So, my apologies for those who have been patiently waiting for our emergency. All right, we have several members of the community who'd like to speak, and they've been patient. Bruce Preville, followed by Amy E., Todd Weber, John Fioreta, and Mimi Spreadberry. If you could, Bruce, just squeeze that handle right underneath the mic. There you go. Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, council members, and committee members. On my card, it says that I'm championing for humanity. And what that means is that I'm championing transformative solutions that leverage the systemic challenges that humanity is facing in terms of climate change, in all its dimensions. And all its dimensions as addressed by the Sustainable Development Goals. We face, as the mayor said earlier, framing is deterministic of outcome. So, what does it mean to declare a climate emergency? Why don't we just continue with the current plans? We're doing good things, we're doing bold things. Well, we need to address the urgency. We need to create a framing that is consistent with the urgency, the immediacy, the magnitude, and the intersectionality of the threat that we face with climate change. It's not just about the climate, it's about the impact on our community. It's about looking at solutions, there need to be a wide range of solutions, there's not just one solution. And Climate Smart San Jose is a great program. It was a huge step. It was bold. In terms of its objectives, in terms of the efforts that have been made for community engagement, the question I have is, does community engagement get you what you can get when you have community ownership? With something that's as critical as we're facing now, we have to have ownership by the community, or else you'll just have nominal participation by a few people, and that's not what this is about. So, the question I have is, once we pass this, and I'm discussing this with the county supervisors as well, once we pass this, what's the action? What can we do that is transformative, that we wouldn't have done already?
Thanks, Bruce. All right, Amy, I'm sorry, Amy, welcome.
Good morning. Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Amy Yee. Excuse me, I live in District 6. I've lived in District 6 for more than 40 years, and I'm a volunteer with Citizens Climate Lobby, the Silicon Valley South chapter, which is our area here. First of all, I want to thank the council for passing the memorandum of June 14th of 2017, which was done a very fast, two weeks after Trump withdrew us from the Paris Climate Accord, and for acknowledging that climate change is worldwide, it's a planet-wide problem, and for vowing to stand with other cities throughout the world to enforce the Paris Climate Accord. And I was very proud of you, very proud of us at that time. So, CCL fully supports the resolution being discussed here, but we do request one change. And that change is this. Paragraph four in the resolved clauses of the resolution we're here talking about commits the city to explore support for H R 763, which is the Energy Innovation and Carbon Dividend Act, which was introduced in this session of Congress. So, we believe, or we request, that you amend this resolution to say that our San Jose City Council endorses H R 763. I think that at this late stage in the progressive deterioration of our planet due to climate change, exploring support for H R 763 is really not sufficient. Solutions are needed now, and H R 763 is the solution that finally, after many years, has been presented in Congress. And it may not be perfect, but it is a lot better than sitting back and exploring solutions over and over again. I truly think the time for exploring solutions has passed. Let me just say that there are 50 other cities that have endorsed H R 763. I have forwarded a list of those to Councilwoman Davis, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Weber.
Hi, I'm Todd Weber. I'm also in District 6. Thank you for putting up this climate emergency resolution. 30 years ago, the things we all did created the climate that we live in today. There's roughly a 30-year cycle for the earth to deal with what we put up into the air. That says what we do today is busily creating the climate for 2049. The climate emergency is critical to get us moving quickly to deal with the coming calamities that, more often, more every day, bigger. Having said that, I'm a member of CCL as well, and we really, really, really believe things need to now happen. As Bruce said, declaring a climate emergency, then what do you do tomorrow? What changes? H R 763, support of that moves the puck in a direction that so far, we're stuck. We, as a globe, we're pretty stuck. Anyway, thank you for your time very much.
Thank you. Hi, John, good to see you again.
I'm the mayor. Council members, my name is John Fioreta. I've lived in.
John, could you pull the mic toward you a little bit? Thanks.
I usually don't need them. I live in District 3 and have for the last 28 years. I'm also a volunteer with Citizens Climate Lobby. I want to thank the mayor and the other members of the committee who have signed the memo for this, this resolution, and especially Councilwoman Davis. One of our members contacted her, and that's one of the reasons why this resolution is in front of you today. As Amy said a moment ago, I fully support the motion, and I would just like to reiterate the point she made. We would like you to make that one change to the resolved paragraph number four, so that you come out endorsing H R 763. Where we can get you any information you want between now and next week, if you need it, so just please let us know. So, if you have any questions, we can fill you in on that. And the only other thing I'd like to point out is that this is the first bipartisan climate legislation in a decade, and it goes farther toward meeting the goals than anything else, either President Obama's Clean Power Plan or anything the Trump administration is doing. So, we hope you can get behind this, because as the other speaker said, what's next? This is what's next. The time for making declarations is over. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Spreadberry.
Thank you very much for this time for public comment. I appreciate it very much. I'm a part of Orchard City Indivisible, Environmental Justice, Diverse Silicon Valley. I'm also a youth climate march adult advisor. The youth are very concerned and want to have a livable planet in their futures. I was evacuated by the February floods in 2017. Thank you for mentioning in this declaration the youth marginalized communities and indigenous communities. This is a very robust resolution. My groups look forward to working more with you for an equitable solution. We count on the city to continue to tell the truth about the science and the language of this climate breakdown in climate crisis. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thanks to all members of the community coming out. On H R 763, let me just ask, Dave, I don't know if our legislative affairs team has looked at this yet, or if there's an analysis forthcoming. I see.
I see Bennah.
Bennah's here. Hi, Bennah.
Says he can come save me. And here's Ken as well.
Hi, Ken. Hi, Bennah. So, I know, you know, obviously, this is all coming to you probably a bit all at once. Can you just give us a sense, have we started looking at this bill yet? And when would we expect to have staff's recommendation come to council?
Yeah, we've been in a monitor mode in terms of 763. We had a couple of issues with it. One was that it preempted EPA authority in terms of power plants and industry.
Right.
It did go after mobile emission sources, but not stationary. And then, with hydrofluorocarbons, HFCs, it sort of devalued the impact of those, the fee structure there in terms of those substances was about one-tenth the rate of CO2. So, a handful of these bills came out earlier in the year, different attempts at the same concept. And so, with the language in the resolution was really a signal to support a carbon tax and wait for one that seemed to do the most to emerge.
Right. So, if I could suggest, you know, I've heard these concerns before with H R 763. I'm happy as a plant language would say, we support a carbon tax without attaching to a specific legislation. What I'm really concerned about is bypassing a process we've always had for when we support bills and when we don't, which is, we have careful analysis, we bring it to the council, and we hash it all out. And doing it all in a resolution without doing that is, I think, a bit of a mistake. And I know that there are environmental advocates who are, particularly around the exemption from EPA authority, I think there's a real concern about that. I know the EPA may not do much today, but someday, when we have a different White House, it will, and we're going to really wish EPA was regulating. So, I have concerns about just signing onto a bill, no analysis, but being part of a resolution. That's just never how we've ever done anything. I share the views of many here who have spoken, which is, we need to be taking action, it's not about declarations, and that's why next week, we're considering becoming the largest city in the country to electrify, mandate no gas infrastructure to much of our residential sector and much of our other new buildings. That's why we're considering within a few weeks, hopefully, purchasing hundreds of acres in Coyote Valley in preservation of hopefully more than 1,000 acres down there from development. That's why we're working to accelerate San Jose Clean Energy, that's why we're working on divestment, a whole host of things that we can do locally that are real actions, have real impacts. I agree that that's where our focus should be. I'm not interested in skipping steps around legislation, because I think we all know at the pace that Congress is working, it's, whether it's one week or three weeks or four weeks, is not going to have an impact, particularly given the composition of the Senate. So, I would suggest either let's leave the language as it is, supplant it with something more generic, and then wait for the legislation we want to support, or allow the staff to bring us some positions, and we can hash it out. But I wouldn't want to just bypass all that and do it in one resolution. Counselor, Davis?
Thank you. The reason I signed on to this memo is, we are already being impacted by climate change. We see more frequent floods, as was mentioned, and droughts as well. And I've actually been in contact with the Bennah's office for months about H R 763, so I'm going to go ahead and make the motion to move our memo, but also to give staff direction to come back about H R 763. Do you want it to this, to this body before it comes to council, or can we just do it all at the same time?
Whatever, whatever the standard approach is, I just don't want to slow down the declaration if it's going to take staff some time, but.
Well, again, I've been in contact with the office for a while, so I know they have the analysis, but I just think they haven't brought it to us.
Okay.
Yeah, and so, I know that E S D has been working on that analysis. We can certainly bring it back to rules, that's our standard process. I think on issues like this, it's almost like the advocacy we've taken on paid family leave. So, the city has sent a letter that talks about how we support paid family leave and lists a bunch of different bills that we know are moving, and then offer to work with our delegation to really find a solution. So, we, from an IGR perspective, would suggest a similar approach. But yeah, we can definitely bring some more analysis back.
Thanks. So, I'll incorporate all of that into my motion.
Okay.
Second.
All right. Happy to support the motion. Any comments? Nope. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I pass this. Okay, we're on to open forum. I don't have any cards, remarkably. All right, everybody, have a great day. I need to adjourn.